All right, seven P M. We will call this meeting. To order. Good. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, my gosh, everybody's standing before I am here. All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, everybody.
Yes.
All right, if you could call the roll, please.
Trustee Pappy.
Here.
Trustee Haas.
Present.
Trustee Bedlin.
Here.
President Gerbey.
Here.
Trustee Dorwell.
Here.
Trustee Bart. Here. Trustee Miley.
All right, looks like we are down one. Thank you for that. All right, the next section is for public comments. Please note these are limited to any five minutes per person and anything that is not on the agenda. And we do just ask that if you have any public comments to make, to please state your name so that we can record who you are. Anybody, anyone, anyone? All right, we will move on to the consent agenda. We have the minutes of March seventh, twenty twenty four, and approving general fund, water, and sewer invoices.
Make motion approve consent agenda.
A second.
All right, any questions? I have a motion in a second. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have reports from village committees. First, we have the hundred and fiftieth anniversary subcommittee by trustee Bart.
So we met, I guess it's about two weeks ago now, had a couple new faces. At the mini meeting, which was nice, brought some new ideas to the table for some ideas for fundraising, things like that. We spoke a lot about the events of the day of and kind of solidifying some of the things that we're gonna do. Hornhole tournament, basketball tournament parade, things like that. Talked about bands. And then we also talked a lot about trinkets and items that we can sell for the day of to help generate some funds there as well. We also spoke about the craft fair and our friend Fegonia are gonna be handling that going forward. I'm working with them and Michelle. What that kind of looks like paperwork wise and financial wise and everything should be good there. So we've got a next meeting coming up pretty quick here. We'll talk a little bit more about possibly have a historical book that would be looking at during then. Should be fun.
Excellent. We have any questions of the chairman? Chairwoman, I should say.
Oh.
All right, thank you very much, trustee Bart. Next, we have the Public Safety Committee with trustee Miley not being here. Trustee Haas will fill us in as to what ended up happening at that committee.
Sure, thank you. We discussed a couple discussion points. We talked about crosswalk safety from Highland Drive and Fergone Avenue. We also discussed the paramedic program with the chief and administrator, kind of went over some numbers, some things we're gonna talk about here in the future. Obviously, we're a long ways from now. We finally get the funding from the county, but we're a long ways yet. Still trying to get this program up and running. So we've got some different options that you guys will continue to discuss moving forward. All good stuff, just some things we have to get put in place ahead of time. And then we also interviewed and recommended Sergeant Eric Leighton for Marshall.
We don't have much we'll discuss later, so. Excellent. Awesome. All right, any questions of trustee Haas? All right. If not, we'll move on to the Ferdonia Government Center Committee. So we met, what was that, yesterday? I think it was. Was it yesterday? I think it was yesterday. They're all just kind of blurring together now. Who knows anymore at this point? Anyway, we, we went over, we got together to go over a number of things. One of them was the intergovernmental agreement for the management of the Ferdonia Government Center. We had noted that this, you know, this first agreement had expired already, and I think the first agreement that we had was for fifteen years. So we went through the agreement with the town side as well. And are just looking at different, at different changes that we can make now that we have some different things going on and in place such as rentals, the hall rentals and things like that. So we updated some of those. I'm guessing we'll be coming before the board in the next, probably the next meeting to talk about those changes and vote on that as a body here. And then after that, we had a discussion on the Election Day Emergency Response Plan. So that was a good internal discussion and just how things go day to day on an election day and what to expect if there's any issues or anything that comes up. So talked about that and then just some items for future, future consideration. We spoke a little bit about the maintenance, road maintenance agreements and following and things like that that we'll hash out in the next couple of weeks and months here. So there's a good meeting overall. And I'd welcome any questions from anybody if they have any. All right. All right, we will move on to report on operations of the village. I'm first, I don't have anything to report. We did a business of the month today, which was really cool. It was the Fergone Family Restaurant. So that'll be announced later on, but it was, it was really neat to get the history of that individual business and, and the gentleman that's had that and that has owned that now, coming up on how many years did he say? Thirty years. This thirty years is him working there?
Uh.
Yeah, see, I think.
Thirty years of commitment.
Yes, right, correct. So really a business that, and we learned all about the business beforehand and stuff too. So staple in the community for sure and just an overall good conversation. So I look forward to sharing that later on this month. That's all I have, I think, at the moment. So I'll move on to the village administrator.
Sure thing. Well, as this body knows, we awarded the bid for the industrial park to Cruz Check Construction. They have spent about a week with our contract for them to review it and sign off on that. And then they just sent it back to us this week for us to start signing off as well. And we're planning a pre-construction meeting with them next week. So we're looking forward to all of that. We also reviewed plans for PWSP. So for those who don't know, in the community, they are planning a significant expansion of their branch here in Ferdonia. So we reviewed those plans. They plan on, they plan on bringing those final plans to us April first. The Plan Commission will review them the beginning of May, and then we can move forward from there. So just thankful for them to continue to invest here in our community. We closed on our debt proceeds, as everybody knows, and we're in the process of transit, transitioning those debt proceeds to Ellers, as you guys approved at the last meeting. Treasurer Debius and I also worked on the medical leave bank policy that you guys will be discussing later tonight. As trustee Haas mentioned, the fire chief and I went through various scenarios with our paramedic program so we can get more well-versed on that. And then we're planning a joint meeting with the other municipalities in the coming month here too. I won't sell too much of Eric's thunder, so you can touch on DPW items, but we're working through RFP inquiries for the Milwaukee Culver project. As you guys know, we looked at doing this last year. All of the bids were significantly higher than what we estimated them to be. We added more money in our budget and now we're doing it again. We've seen a lot of interests, you know, surprising amount of interest in this project. So we hope that this will result in at least a couple competitive bids that we can consider for this year's CIP. Michelle's not here to say it, but spring election season is officially upon us. We sent out our absentee ballots. We've started in-person absentee voting. We did our in-person absentee time over at the senior center. And people are raring to go. We've had at least a couple people trickle in depending on the day. And we are ready for April second's election as well. And then finally, we planned, you know, our various events, the hundred and fiftieth, as we talked about, we've collected sponsorships for our new music series, which is gonna be set up to be pretty exciting and Freedom Park, moving the park as a sponsor, and we're starting to collect sponsors for the Mud Run as well. So we're, we're well on our way to get our summer funded with all the exciting events that we have. And then my final shout out is that I can officially say, since we have signed off on documents, that Port Washington State Bank is going to be a primary sponsor of our splash pad. They're donating fifty thousand dollars for this project as a, as a founding donor. So that is a huge deal. We are very thankful for that commitment. And we look forward to celebrating with them. They plan on coming to one of our meetings in April. Big check, take pictures, all that exciting stuff. But we look forward to celebrating with them as well. So a huge thank you to them.
Awesome. All right, any questions for administrator?
Yeah, how much the, the order?
No, you're good.
How much is the splash pad? I, I understand that that's a generous, very generous thing. Other issue. Amongst it. Okay, so fifty grand. How much is that flash?
I guess the total cost of a splash pad, if we paid for everything, it's like three twenty-five. So again, we have a hundred committed by us. The significant fifty here, very smaller donations that are trickling, but I think the big savings that we're seeing is in-kind donations. So again, I don't want to speak for these vendors who haven't given a signed promises yet, but that's where we're gonna see a significant cost savings is on the in-kind donations that are help with electrical, plumbing, excavating, project management. Which, so we have a lot of those lined up to help with crossings.
All right, any other questions of the administrator? All right, we will move on to the village marshal.
Good evening. Your report in front of you. Both of the numbers, as I believe you're familiar with, they're fairly self-explanatory. One in particular, our hours were down a little bit this month, but that had more to do with a couple lengthy vacations for a couple of our members. So that was, that was more than I expect that to pick up. To pick up going into the next month. Everything else seems about in order. The big thing we've begun working on this month is time here, we start looking at our our training and our trading needs, making sure that we're all up to date for this current period, which ends in July. And then starting our planning for our training needs for the following training period. That appears to be going one very well. I've started some training on the managerial policies that we're required to do. It's like strip search policy, use force policy. And I expect us to be fully compliant until July.
Excellent.
And as always, I stand ready for any questions or concerns.
Your weapons upgrade, you did that last year, correct?
A couple of years ago, sorry. Okay, it's only like a few blocks to go. So. And you were forty calories, nice.
And you got like seven year.
Both, they rather say.
Thankfully.
Yes.
Anybody else? All right, thank you, sir. We'll move on to the fire chief. I believe the report is in your packet. Is any questions of that? Otherwise, if not, we'll move on to the Public Works Waste Water Treatment Plant Operators.
Report is in your packet. You appear to feel any questions or concerns.
Anybody have any questions of Eric or Brandon back there?
Are you guys ready for the incoming snow?
You're on your own.
Is any of it functioning? So if it does snow, we can take care of it.
The truck has been down all season. We've gone down all sand with it. It's still working. So everything ready to go on it? We'll see what happens.
Wait.
Ready.
All right. Any updates on the lab? Anything going on there?
I moved up to municipality to the west. They have a meeting for me next Thursday, and I submitted the numbers.
See what happens.
How many municipalities are we up to doing their testing for?
Six.
Excellent.
We'll be losing one just because of a couple of interest with running a couple of that in the same area for the numbers, but we weren't doing it usually full time anyway, so we actually are gonna lose some of that one and we'll gain more from it.
No. Okay.
Or so.
Perfect.
Are you seeing any residential testing coming in?
So more like for well water testing than that. They'll pick up once it forms up.
Does, I mean, everybody's aware that you do that, like when Debbie and I have the block, we always have to take our water just to port. I mean, and everybody's got to do that completely, I believe.
It, it's recommended, it's not required.
They know a lot about the gun or wet age or whatever.
We actually, we're gonna include that in the next town newsletter.
Cool.
That service.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's been a while since they put up a newsletter, so now we're.
We did put up pre-sides, build the sidewalk, throwing it out to let people out by the tree plant founders. And then also a street light will be going in that intersection that is pretty dark.
Nice. All right, any other?
I got one more. Sure, public street lighting and stuff like that, like you said. I mean, the policy is right now that they basically wait so far down and throw that LED in there now. Is that right?
Right, well, is that the other clue? So I usually come to work early and then I'll go around the village and then and I'll let Michelle or Melissa know, which is all they updated on that now. That's a, we other teams do, right?
Okay.
Did we place an order yet for plot track that we're gonna buy in the future? I know we discussed that. The best, sooner we get it ordered in, the better I'll be.
I was gonna bring that in May.
Okay.
So then there's gonna put the new board, because there's gonna be a deadline for it to get that truck two years. That's me order.
Okay, so that's in order to. All right.
Yes.
I don't expect to get any kind of discount in our streetlight and pool rental if they go to LEDs. I, I don't see them ordering the press at that.
No, but I know that if I was putting it today, either nine or tomorrow, they got fixed. So I know, we talked about that one by then. I think it's the next day they're out there.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, sir. We have a letter from Michelle, who is not here today, our clerk. So we can go through that if you want. Any questions on that? Not, we're gonna move on to the treasurer's report. Oh, she's a nice.
Your package.
Oh, very good. All right. Any question?
We approve this policy.
I worked. But if you, if not, I would have to take off.
Oh, boy.
So yes, I have been having a lot of time off, but it has been a good time to be having time off as far as work on those. But.
Right, yes.
It's working.
Very good. All right, any other questions from Lisa? We'll move on to the Ozaki County District Two Supervisor.
So this is my last report. I'll give you guys, I hate to beat a dead horse, but this is, this is it for me. So I just wanna say thank you for the four years. It's been it's been interesting. I learned a lot. I hope I did, I hope I did a good job for District Two. I did the best I could. I really tried to listen to my constituents and listen to voters and do what I thought was right. I mean, I got a lot accomplished up there, but I couldn't have done it without the support of this team and the community as well. You know, we did everything from constitutional rights to new dispatch center to EMS funding and through, did all that through COVID. So it's a lot of ups and downs through transportation. So it didn't seem like I got a lot done, but when you sit and look at it, I really am proud of what we accomplished up there and what I was able to do. So gonna miss it. Obviously, looking forward to the new chapter, but really appreciate you guys for all your support and all your help. And helped me get all that done. I can't do it by myself. It's all a team effort, but I did the best I could and I tried to listen to everyone and do what I thought was right. So thanks for everything. It's been a heck of a ride and wish you guys both the best of luck moving forward.
Thanks, Josh. Is there any update from the county though?
There's no update for the county. All right. Not there this time. Selection. Everyone's, everyone's busy campaigning here till April second, so.
For sure. I've just given it your time. Yeah. Thank you for all, everything that you've done. I mean, between you and Donnie, I mean, you guys have done excellent. So thank you. Looking forward to Bruce carrying the torch and hopefully updating us as things come up and whatnot, and hopefully coming back to this body to report. Back.
Absolutely. And thank Josh. The busy, busy show up there.
Perfect. All righty. Next, we're gonna move on to the Mid-Murrayan Municipal Association Designated Representative. That's a long title.
Yeah, that's M M M A D R.
Mamma Madder. Can we update that officially? Put that in the notes.
And we'll come up with a better title again.
I like it.
Okay, we, we met in the the county's executive actually did show up later on in a meeting. We were done with all of the business and everything, and then he finally showed up. And presented us with on the pamphlet that showed all of the things that the county had been sharing the costs for and helping out for Washington County municipalities and things of that. So he said that that was more valuable to municipalities than sharing the property tax money. Which may or may not be the case. I'm not familiar with West Binns. Washington County is financed it, but the thing is, the municipalities still can't budget that amount of money. They have to take what the county gives them for the project that the county wants them to do. And so that's kind of a sacrifice of a little home rule for municipalities and it still doesn't satisfy our desire or what we believe to be our right to get the, a large chunk of that money, that sales tax money. So that's, that's the way that turned out. So and I doubt that we're ever gonna change the mind of the person. So we're, we're at a standstill as far as that goes. I mentioned to the committee that one of the only things that we have to hang our hat on and really work for is, is to lobby our legislators and other legislators that we know to increase the portion of shared revenue in the budget from the tax revenue that they, they've shared a bit of it with us this year, two percent or something like that. And if we can work on that percentage and have that good percentage grow over the years, I think that's the only occasion that we all have to get more of that sales tax money. We'll have to come as a result of state decision rather than a county decision. Because those decisions are just not gonna happen. So that's what we're kind of working on then.
All right, excellent. Thank you, sir. Any questions? Trustee Dorwitt. All right, thank you so much. We will move on for items for discussion and our action. The first being a motion to appoint Sergeant Leighton to head marshal of the Village of Ferdonia effective April first, twenty twenty four.
I will say, in absence of trustee Miley being here, he did a great job conducting that public safety meeting, asked a lot of good questions. And Sergeant did a great job answering them. And I feel very confident and excited for the new chapter here. So I'm proud to make a motion to appoint Sergeant Leighton to head marshal of the Village of Ferdonia.
I have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions for Sergeant Leighton?
Excited to have you.
All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Welcome.
Welcome, Eric. Sorry to see you go. It's been a pleasure these last six years. And my part. I've learned a lot from.
I think we all have.
Never mind, I'm not even gonna say what I was gonna say. All right, very good. Well, thank you very much. Next, we have discussion and possible action on updated branch shipping policy. I don't know, Eric, do you wanna take this away or do you want me to just give a little?
Sure. So since I started last year, I changed how often we handle the branch shipping by eliminating the call-ins to relieve the workboat at the office. If the branches were out there, we were gonna pick up and ship them. We were gonna drive past someone that didn't call it in. And there too was the old hours, just updated. Some of it was like full tree removals that we don't do that if, you know, brought in by contractor to take the tree down. We're not there to ship it for them. Put in some language that if it's, you know, if we're short staff, if a storm's going through on a Monday or whatnot, that we ship on Tuesday. And then the length of time, I think it was like twenty minutes. And then after that, it wasn't like a dollar a minute or something like that, which was, I mean, great for a homeowner, because where are you gonna find that? We'll come back next week to it, which otherwise we'll be at, you know, one or two places all day and we won't get it.
That did happen this past year, didn't it? Where you guys were hanging out. You were very happy about that. Brandon looks happy about that.
So. Yes.
Branded and stuff like that down and showing tree mounted, saying that pictures and stuff like that. What's going on? I, I don't know if that's relevant or it's off.
Are you talking to Northman side?
Yeah.
Yeah, we cut them from American Garden. They're not ours. And I mean, he's destroying our fence.
Yeah, it's all messed up. I mean, it's not necessary. Do we take it down or do we need to develop that up like that?
Well, I guess I saw that I did equip in the new, we're gonna fix it the best.
All right, thanks.
All right, so the policy that we have before you in your packet are the updates that were made. If there's any questions on that for our DPW director, take those. Otherwise, we would be looking for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the updated branch shipping policy.
My second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Are there any other questions?
I have one question. When you talk about the full tree removal, if a homeowner wants to take his own tree down and he's in the backyard with his saw, making saws, whatever, will you accommodate that twenty minutes at a time or?
Yes.
But you're just being, that contractor comes in, makes his money, leaves the stuff laid, and it's our job to clean it up. Okay.
And then I, I forgot one of the other things, the neighborhood storm. But it will form, it will, people will be all check the ads available. I know people want it out of their yard, but we have had straight line mints come through last year. Two days, three days? Three days we went out there, got chipped in on it. I have a question.
I don't wanna open up a can of worms, and I'm sure once I say this, they'll be like, I'm glad he's leaving, but I know we've discussed this before, but I mean, do we branch shipping's always been kind of a point of contention for as long as I've been, just because of the injury that it can cause. It's dangerous. I mean, you and I have talked before about potentially looking at not even offering it just because of, from a safety standpoint and for workman's comp and injuries and I mean, again, we did put that in there. I remember Donnie around the community the time we did that charge after twenty minutes, which was just something to try and deter people.
Yeah, it's how you're gonna make them pay.
Right. So, but regardless, this has always been a thing of, this is very injury causing injury and that can cost us. So it might be, like I said, I'll prove this tonight, but it might be something we're looking into in the future. Is this something we even consider offering anymore? I don't know what the answer is, but.
Have we had a lot of injuries from that? I haven't heard. I wouldn't say injuries now, but I mean, people out there for two days straight bending over, picking stuff up. I mean, I haven't heard the guys say anything, but I mean, my previous employment, I mean, we go out there and there'd be lead pipes in the branches, concrete, you know, metal, they're trying to get rid of it, garbage. I mean, I mean, all I can take is push that hole through the chipper there. Lots of hard felt about chipper. I mean, all I can take is push that hole through the chipper there. Lots of hard felt about chipper.
Maybe they could, uh, look again at the burn policy that we have, and maybe if they have the proper area and they notify, like we used to do in Wabaka, when he did stuff like this, that notify the fire department to add something over the regular. Fire that.
I know the fire chief would probably disagree. I don't mind it. I like fires, because I'm not a fire clerk, but but I know he doesn't mind.
I mean, but otherwise, what do you do? You have to have.
Uh, the only other option that I know of would be, uh, West Bend does it, I believe. Yep, is, but then again, they still go around the pickups, throw down their pickup truck, take it to the, the stockpile, and then they have a duck rider come. And I think Cedarburg, they both theirs in their garbage trucks, and then all that else was a value group. And then the duck rider comes up there.
And that charge.
Well, I think West Bend is like a hundred thousand a year for that.
Yeah, they're expensive. I don't know if the DNR is gonna allow brain.
Well, regardless, I think we have a, a branch shipping policy in front of us to discuss and decide if we're gonna approve or not. So.
Yeah, leaving the branches full length is, is a improvement. You're not bending over to pick up four, four foot long pieces. You run a whole sixteen footer in there. Lift it once, it's gone. So, no, it's, it's a good, uh, it's a good, uh, policy.
Are there any other questions? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for shipping branches. Alright, discussion on possible action on medical leave bank options. Um, who wants to take this one?
I think our treasurer can, if she would like.
I can. Um.
High level.
High level?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I mean, currently, the village has no options for employees who are at their max PTO to, it's either use it or lose it. And nobody wants to use their P, lose their PTO, um, in, where I come from and other municipalities that I know of. Um, they have what's called the medical leave bank, where if you get to your max PTO, you can roll that time into a medical leave bank for FMLA-approved events. They have to be three days or more. The medical leave bank would not be, um, used for, say, I have a migraine and have to be home today, or I have the flu, unless the flu lasts longer than three days. Um, it's just a, like a s- little insurance policy for the employee. It would allow the employee to build time for that one week. If you do have an incident, you have to be off a full week before short-term disability kicks in. Would allow the employee to build time for that. It would allow the employee to build time to supplement their short-term disability if they choose, um, because short-term disability only pays sixty percent versus, you know, so then they could supplement with that without using their PTO. Or they could use a combination of both. That all makes sense?
And to clarify, this does not cost the village anything.
No, it, no, the only cost to the village would be was when an employee uses it, but it is the employee's time. You know, I, the employee has earned the time, and they're just putting it in this to insure themselves basically for their pay. Um.
How many days do they get enough by?
We, right now, employees get zero sick time. All, all the employees, the only time we have is PTO, and that is vacations, whatever, however we.
Well, it's accrued at different rates depending on their, you know, years of service here.
And it's a rolling.
Yeah.
Balance.
I guess the one question that I would have, and I think some of us here on the board remember this, uh, when we lost employees beforehand, and I don't remember if this was a sick bank or whatever this discussion was. Um, I'm, I'm guessing that this does not behave in the same way should an employee leave?
Correct. Well, we did put a paragraph or a sentence in here saying that when an employee leaves, they do not get paid out for any time in this medical leave bank policy.
Okay.
You, it, it's a lost time. Um, we also did put, which I don't think we discussed at finance, a statement in there that after six months of employment, the village would fund or put in twenty hours um, to get the bank started, um, just as a, thank you for hanging out with us for six months.
Yeah, does, do the, does the new employee earn that, that twenty hours? In other words, they have to contribute twenty hours of their.
No, the only, the only way an employee can contribute their time is by getting to their max PTO, which generally would take a year or more to do.
Right, right.
Um, or at the end of the year saying, you know what, I have forty hours left. I'm not at max, but can you please put this into my medical leave bank? Maybe they know they have something coming up, whatever. But so they can opt to just automatically put time in, or wait till they get to their max PTO.
No, my question is, it's rather specific. Um, if an employee gets twenty hours to their bank, does that twenty hours stay in their bank and they build on that twenty hours? Or do they, they have the twenty hours that they can use if they get hurt tomorrow, whatever? Now, what they contribute to their um, time bank, do they have to contribute up to twenty hours before they start adding to that twenty hours?
No, that twenty hours would be given to the employees, and then the employees would build on top of that.
So, that's gonna be quite a cost for the village.
Will only be a cost to the village if somebody uses it.
Right, right. Sure, it's, no, it's.
I get what you're saying. I mean.
It's an insurance that we like to give them, and we'd like them to be covered from day one, that they start that they have this to use.
Wouldn't be they wanna be eight hours maybe more.
Right.
Cause it's six months.
Six months after.
Know that the policy says that it can't be used for anything less than three days, which would be twenty-four hours. So, if they can't use it, it's six months anyway. They'll be able to contribute at least four more hours.
Yeah. But eventually, there, it's a gift of twenty hours of pay.
Potentially, yeah.
Potentially. Potentially.
And if, if, if they use it, well, then it's whatever, but whatever is.
The, the rules to use it are pretty strict though. I mean, it has to be FMLA-approved. You know, it's.
I mean, even if it does cost us, you know, hours a week, I mean, it's pretty small price to pay for the efficiency that we're gonna gain on this from people not having to arbitrarily take vacation when, you know, it's less advantageous. But like, if we were busy, right, if the office was super busy right now, I mean, we'd be hurt, because she's taking an extra payout right now. Cause she's at her max.
Hmm.
So. I think it's kind of a give and take, um, and some of the people probably don't even use their bank, you know, if they're given that point.
Yeah, if they, I mean, it's. If they, if they have the twenty hours that they can use from their first eligibility, then, um, chances are, they're likely not gonna use any of it or a lot of it. And they can reimburse for those twenty hours until they get their own contributions that are up to twenty hours. So, they still have the insurance of the twenty hours right from their first eligibility. And they don't have a gift from the village carrying on for the rest of their tenure as, as employees.
I agree with that.
Is that, uh, the reason we're doing the, the whole thing is so that employees don't have to use their vacation for such and such and, and this and that. Well, they, they wouldn't be using their vacation. They would be earning the, uh, hours. And those hours would go towards making the twenty hours that we give them even. I canceling that, okay, now we've earned all those numbers now. Now we can start building on it, because there is a limit for the number of hours that you can have in your MLB bank also.
If you feel you don't want to fund the first twenty hours.
No, I.
Take that out and not say, tell the employee builds it up on their own, because there are gonna be some employees who never put an hour into the medical leave bank. They will use their PTO, and they will chance it, and they will be, they will never put one hour.
Well, it should be their chances, they're that foolish.
Well. Their PTO to supplement their short-term disability or their.
Well, and the other.
I don't wanna subsidize, subsidize bad decisions.
Right. Well, the other thing to consider, let's say they're here seven months and they decide to leave. They don't get.
Right, they don't get that pay. So.
They can't use it. They can't take like the last two months of their employment here as vacation either. That's not FMLA.
Correct.
Sanction.
Correct.
That part, that part, that's a good, that's a good thing. I just, um, I just, I, I like the idea of giving them the twenty hours right from start so that if they need it, it's there. They're not hiding dry just because they're no place.
But they can't use it.
But to.
You know what I'm saying? They couldn't use it for the first year anyway. Because you have to have twenty-four hours.
You could always use your PTO to supplement.
Depending if you have any.
Well, I don't understand why they have to wait for for the first year in order to use any of those twenty hours.
You wouldn't even get it till you're here six months. It's kinda like, congratulations, you, you're here six months, you passed your six-month review.
It's like when you're eligible for health insurance. You know, any additional benefits, things like that.
Correct.
True.
Then we should set it up to avoid all of this, all of my concern. We could set it up that you, you, you can, you start earning your, um, MLB um, bank uh, right when you're, where, where you start and, you know.
The only way to.
But the village will cover twenty hours worth of sick, according to FMLA, until your bank gets up to twenty hours. Then it's not, well, you have these hours in the bank, the village will.
That's not fair to the employee like myself, who doesn't take vacation when they're busy. And as you know, for the past two years. Super busy, and I couldn't take time off. So, I would have a huge medical leave bank balance, and Michelle, for example, is not at her max. She will not earn time into her medical leave bank. So, then I have to fund my own, but you're gonna give Michelle twenty hours. That's what you're saying. You're gonna give some people the hours and other not the others.
That's, that's, uh, I.
Who's got a question?
Yeah, I, I can't really vote for this program because there's so many holes in it.
First one you got.
There's so many, there's so much room for attorney's opinions in the way we've got this set up. I mean, did that come out of our heads in the office? Did we put our heads in the office together and say?
No, the same policy is used by another municipality. We just stole it.
Borrowed.
But we borrowed this from another municipality, made it our own, took out a couple of the benefits that they offered in addition to this. And.
I'm gonna have, I'm gonna give, um, trustee, first to.
I'm not all for the rollover. I, I don't mind the PTO, but I don't like the rollover part about it at all.
What, what do you mean?
Being able to compound that year, right?
It, it compound, if the PTO balances every single paycheck.
I'm, I'm just saying about like a cured hours, a cured hours, like, let's say you have cured twenty hours. We're not rolling it over into your second year where you develop another twenty hours to get.
You're not, for the medical leave bank, the village would not give twenty hours every year. It would be a one-time twenty-hour placement. That's it.
Then you're responsible for putting anything else.
Employee is responsible to build it.
But they're, they're not banked year to year, is what I'm saying.
Your medical leave bank time is. You, you could.
But you don't get paid out.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't get paid.
Six months, because the maximum is four hundred and eighty hours, which is, uh, twelve weeks.
But either way, yeah, it's, that wouldn't be, that.
And it's not payable if you leave.
Cause it has, cause it has to be FMLA-approved, and I don't believe that that would be an approved reason to use it.
It's a question.
Yep. That's what it sounds like to me, at least. Are any other opinions or questions on this document?
Can we mention what we spoke about in finance that with the short-term disability? The long-term plan for that?
The, it.
Is it?
We have one employee who's very much against this idea, but a possible thought behind the medical leave bank is once employees have a chance to
Has to drop their short-term.
Build up their time is to drop the short-term disability that we offer to employees, which does cost the village out. Right? Every year, we pay monthly to the short-term disability insurance. Once, once employees are given an opportunity to build some time up into this, we could drop the short-term disability, which would in fact save the village money in the long run. I wouldn't do, I wouldn't adopt this and drop short-term disability immediately. I would let the employees know that that is coming in the future and give them time to build. Just in case they have that incident where they need time.
And I believe trustee Bart, you had, you had talked about at the finance committee, you know, the, the difference between this and short-term disability and how that's still important. And I know you had directed us to look at those options, uh, which, which we're doing.
The other thing is, is when an employee is off on short-term disability, they're not allowed to check emails. They're not allowed to come in and do anything. They have to be a hundred percent hands-off. So, for myself, if I was off on short-term disability, and I was off for two, three, four weeks and didn't check my email at least, it would get crazy.
It would get crazy, and I will, we can't use that, because even if you're on PTO, you shouldn't be checking emails. You shouldn't be doing anything in the office. That's your time. It's your personal paid time off. You should not be doing anything village-related during that PTO thing. I'm just saying.
I'll answer it. So, if your employee can do that, so.
I mean, yeah.
Alright.
I'd make a motion to approve the medical leave bank policy and incorporate it, say, policy into the employee playbook.
A second.
Alright, I have a motion in a second. I'm afraid to ask, are there any other questions? And if not, I'll call a question. All those in favor? Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Okay, Bruce is in a, who else?
So, we've got. Motion passes, it sounds like three.
Forty-two.
Four.
And did you call for a division? Who said no?
Dan and Bruce, Dan and Bruce said.
One, two, three, four. Yeah, we're good. Alright. Motion carries. Thank you. Alright. Thank you for that. Next, we'll move on to motion to approve utility easement on parcel, that number.
I, I can summarize the next two items.
Thank you.
Um, this has been, uh, and I'm not exaggerating, a six-month-long process. Trustee Doorward is well aware of that. Uh, cause it concerns one of his relatives. Um, but long story short, uh, in our industrial park, if you remember that plan, we have Innovation Drive that's running through the park. We have the utility lines that's running through. Those utility lines are gonna cross along. If you look at this map here, they're gonna cross along this property line here and then go across where I highlighted in pink. And that is so that we make a loop with our utility lines. So, if we had to shut off. And that is so that we make a loop with our utility lines. So if we had to shut off different areas, we're able to do that without closing off the entire industrial park. Uh, this is a very good, good idea that I'll compliment our DPW director on because because it was his idea, so great job. Um, in order to do that, though, we need to request utility easements along these two properties. So you have a long line here that's owned by the Doorwards and you have a short little path here and a trench that is owned by, uh, Badger Paperboard there. So both parties have been approached and are approving, uh, that we purchase these easements. Again, we're not gonna be um, doing anything on top of the land, we're just burying our pipes along that area. Um, to do this process, we had to get an outside appraisal, we had to send notices, we had to give them so many days to respond. And then at the end of the day, this is the final step, is you guys approving these two easements. I believe one is for about five hundred bucks and another one's for about one thousand two hundred. Um, and then after we get your approval, then we can set up those offers to purchase those easements for both parties to sign off on and we will be good to go.
So I just want to make a mention that trustee Doorward is gonna recuse himself from this discussion, um, for an obvious conflict of interest, so.
One here says two thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars.
That that might do it. I don't, I don't have the number from. Yeah, so that's for the longer partial portion, and then that five hundred is for the Badger.
So it's five twelve for Badger?
There you go.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve utility easements for whatever, um, I D and I E P, can I do both at once?
Sure.
Yes, you can.
Perfect. That was the second, yeah.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Are there any other questions? All right, I'll call a question. All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. All right, um, for this next item, I am going to be passing the baton to the president pro tem, Ricka Beglin, and accusing myself from the discussion as well. So, let me just one second.
Yeah, good, all right. Um, I can't motion to adjourn into closed session, so hold on. The motion.
A second.
Second. We'll call a vote, start Tiffany.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
We are in closed session. I'd like to invite our guests, uh, of matter, and Michelle, who's today.
Melissa.
Melissa.
The the other end.
You're pretending to be.
I'm pretending to be Michelle today.
I have a question.
So.
We have stuff.
Can I please introduce ladies? So C A R R I D R K, that's our.
Where are we here?
Number ten.
Uh, okay, uh, we have discussion, next we have discussion on possible action on offer to purchase um, whatever that parcel is located in, to number three.
And Mr. President, uh, from closed session, we're gonna recommend skipping this item.
Sounds good.
Are we skipping? Are we tabling? Are we?
We just gave it.
Okay. We'll skip this item if that's okay with everybody. Excellent. Now I would entertain a motion to enter closed session pursuant to state statute nineteen point eight five one C, considering employment promotion compensation and performance evaluation data and any other public complaint over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise of responsibility. Village administrators' performance review.
That's who we want.
Not yet.
So hold on. Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. We'll do a roll call vote, starting on that end by Bruce.
Aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Now you can leave.
And you're gonna take over when you're done.
All right, we have adjourned into open session. Again, uh, there's no correspondence, I don't believe, or nothing that I have, any items for future consideration by anybody?
Hell, you think it's. No, I don't.
Point of order. Motion to adjourn.
Aye, second.
Okay, I'm.
You really have something?
Yeah. Oh, okay, well, all right. Just a reminder, the next meeting is what I wanted to do, that I have special recognition.
Yeah.
And kinda like to make a motion for a note to, uh, keep it towards the top of the agenda. We'll put it on our presentation, so it's a topic.
That sounds good.
Well, we put it at the bottom, so everybody stays in this meeting.
Yeah.
Communication.
Right. Sit here all night.
As a clarification, just for staff, who is working on that thing, that commemorative statement? You are? Okay, great.
Uh, and then I'm also, I would like to try to invite, wait, do we have to? I mean, we have. The marshal. Dable, we wanna invite him as well, because I know he doesn't want us to do anything special for him, but I said screw it and I'm gonna do it anyway. Um, and then I gotta do something for you, Yahud's too, at some point, so just make sure that you.
Oh, great.
Oh, you, yeah, asked about schedule of when we did it last year. So last year, we did it the second meeting in May, just so you know.
That'd be perfect.
That's what you wanted.
We can do that, that'd be great, because I got some people on.
So that'd be the commendation for you. Commendation.
Important, you gotta make people come, okay.
Commendation for serving.
We have a motion in a second on table, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, but I don't remember who did it, so. Okay, Josh and Josh and Don, uh, okay, I'm gonna call all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good night at nine forty-nine, nine forty-three P M.
Not a record.
Not a record.
No, it's a hundred.